Ready?
I don't see us on the screen.
We're not on the screen.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My name is John Yater. I am the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission and will be presiding - can you get that out - over this commission's deliberation on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will direct to staff regarding the case. After the commission initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comments, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answering any questions. It is at that point I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not to the applicant staff or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, as I may exercise the prerogative to quicken up the pace. We'll just make it that way. If need be, to five minutes, go like that. Okay, now we'll start our regular agenda. And first of all, do we have Gary?
Pastor Charlie Hale will do the invocation.
And we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we indeed give thanks for such a beautiful location where we live. You have truly blessed this place in so many ways, and we're thankful for the rain coming down tonight. Lord, we have a number of people who have given themselves to make this community as good as possible, better and better. So we pray for this commission, that you'll give them discernment and wisdom tonight, give everyone involved clear thinking, clear minds, clear communication. And after all said and done, in a moment, we're gonna say the pledge and use the phrase "under God." Lord, may we be pleased with how we acted under your watch care. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Pastor.
Next item, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Dusky?
Here.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Here.
Chairperson Yater?
Here.
Next item, the approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes, concerns for the May 11th minutes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
Okay. We'll all say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Any announcements? Any announcements? Okay. Well, then we'll start right in with our hearing, our public hearing items. First public hearing item is GPA 15-002, upon the application of the Fane Signature Group, a public hearing to consider an amendment to the General Plan 2025, changing the land use designation of an approximately nine-acre parcel from mixed-use, low-density use to residential use property located south of Florentine Road and east of Mean Street in the area known as the Entertainment District. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You're considering a general plan amendment to General Plan 2025. Illustrated in this slide are the zoning use districts throughout the downtown for Prescott Valley, and it's intended to show the abundance of commercial zoning. Later slides, I'm gonna discuss some of the designations within the town's general plan for this specific location and others. The application before you is a general plan amendment which proposes the utilization of a little over nine acres in the Entertainment District adjacent to the Albertsons and near the Fountain. This application follows a preceding application that was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council in a joint session about 15 months ago. During that time, the commission and Town Council also conducted a field visit to familiarize himself with this property as well as one other. Now before you is a similar application proposing utilization of this nine-plus acres for luxury apartments in downtown. You also recently, last month, reviewed this also with the Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, the Town Council, and other items that appeared on that joint session. The applicant suggests that the residential development is necessary to really build a presence in downtown, to have greater occupancy downtown and utilization of existing businesses. You have a commercial core which has emerged around the highway corridor and now is emerging along Glassford Hill, where you have the Entertainment District, you have the Events Center, you have Roberts, excuse me, you have Walmart, and you have the Fry's Shopping Center. Other uses, obviously, occur along major arterials, Highway 69, and prior to the development of downtown, you saw commercial developing exclusively along that highway corridor. The marketing approach that the landowner has used for downtown has caused people to look into the interior of the town, notably at Walmart and the Events Center. The inclusion of these residential units is, are intended to, again, improve that 24/7 occupancy of downtown and utilization of some of the services that are available within walking distances. The zoning, as I pointed out, you've got a little over 260 acres of commercial zoning in downtown. Our town planning staff prepared this for me. I wanted to do that because during the preparation of General Plan 2020, in concert with a second-generation plan that was developed by Peter Calthorpe and Associates, there was a discussion about walkable communities in downtown and also support of commercial blocks, but also buffering to adjoining properties. Couple of things that did occur where commercial zoning was permitted on the boundaries, they were limited to single-story, to transition to residential uses north of Long Look, and also provide buffers with residential services, which are office-type uses. The general plan for, General Plan 2025, and also repeated in General Plan 2020, proposes the utilization of these properties in multiuses, that is to say, in both commercial and residential uses. The town's zoning code doesn't permit the commingling of those uses, rather prohibits multiple-family uses in a commercial use district unless it is secondary to or part of a commercial complex. I made an opinion, looking at the first submittal when this plan concept was first presented, that the inclusion of commercial in some segments of this nine-and-a-half-acre parcel would have been congruent to the town's general plan. However, the property owner has done quite a bit of visioning with downtown recently, and by doing so, they've drawn comparison to some of the successful large commercial developments in, throughout the United States, but drawing comparisons to Boulder, Colorado, drawing comparisons to Kirland in the Scottsdale area. And it's very apparent that there's an order of magnitude of four times more commercial zoning in downtown Prescott Valley that exists. There's also been a change, and we have seen it, where another successful commercial developer along the highway has been able to attract many of the big boxes that we're very pleased to have. However, initially, some of this 260-plus acres of commercial zoning were contemplated to accommodate those big boxes. We don't anticipate that, given the population projections for the town of Prescott Valley for the next 25 years, that there will be that kind of market for big boxes to the size or magnitude of what we see on the highway corridor, and we continue seeing, being attracted to that corridor. So as part of the concept, the developer has come forward and suggested that, one, there will be a need for more residential development in the downtown to complement existing commercial development and support that commercial development. Secondarily, the town has really moved the focus to attracting a university in downtown, a teaching university in concert with the hospital, and by doing so, can point or compare to places like Chapel Hill, North Carolina, where they have made that transition, and they have a teaching hospital in downtown surrounded by residents, students, and the university. That's something that the town is working and will continue to work over the course of the many months in the future. As part of the original proposal, the town staff brought forward a couple of limitations that we believed were significant. Those limitations were the fact that the major bondholder for bond indebtedness for the Events Center had those bonds held, and there was a reserve area designated as part of the sale of those bonds. That reserve area included the Entertainment Complex as well as some properties along Highway 69. Those reserve dollars are intended to make up any shortfalls that might be created if there was a shortage in revenues necessary to pay off those bonds. That payment is made, I believe, annually. The surplus from the Entertainment District, as well as the other designated area on Highway 69, has been tapped. So our concern was that by changing the land use in that location, it would lessen the opportunity for revenue to be generated to support that bond indebtedness, which was the structure of the deal. As part of the settlement agreement for the Events Center that the town ultimately was excused from, however, still paid lawyers' fees to ensure that nothing would come back, as part of that, the major bondholder agreed that they would release the commercial zoning at this designation if there was a 2% surcharge levied, as is the case on other major, large apartment complexes throughout the town of Prescott Valley. That 2% would be leveled against rents assessed to the properties. Based on that, the proponent of this project now says when these things progress to zoning and entitlement formally, they will agree to assess a 2% surcharge, and the town lease management and staff have suggested that those dollars would be allocated as part of that reserve fund to pay off the bond indebtedness. There has been a couple of concept site plans which have been introduced. I'm just gonna illustrate them now, only again for illustrative purposes. These are not intended to show ultimately how they're gonna develop. If this general plan amendment is supported by the commission and ultimately approved by the Town Council, subsequent site planning will have to take place. A preliminary development plan combined with a zoning entitlement will come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately land in the Town Council's lap for their consideration. But a series of different concepts, this was one originally proposed, and then subsequently a more conceptual design layout. A couple of things that the staff brought forth related to concerns about having a compound type of concept in downtown. The applicant has talked about having buildings face like brownstones, having them face Main Street as opposed to necessarily back Main Street, and some of those concepts would be further introduced, or I should say, further refined as you look at site plans if this does go forward. Staff observes that there has been a considerable shift in downtown, both because of a refocus on visioning about what will suitably develop over the course of the next 20 to 25 years. Combine that with a change in market forces that have taken away some of the opportunities for the larger commercial projects in downtown. Staff does support the application as submitted and thinks that it is a good addition to the downtown development fabric. We would suggest that over the time upcoming, that we would focus at some point on doing a downtown overlay district. This was something that was contemplated in the early 2000s by the landowner in the town of Prescott Valley, which would define how you can mix those uses successfully for a successful outcome. That fell short. Everybody got busy during the great run-up and didn't apply the attention necessary to take it to the next level. And so that's where we would wanna do, because if a university lands, or as you heard Manager Tarkowski, when a university lands, there will be needed housing and potentially even dorms in downtown and additional support services. With that, I've intended to give you more of a general overview. You've received quite a bit of material related to this project. I know that Brad Fane, the CEO of Fane Signature Group, is in the audience, and I'm sure he'd love to have a conversation with you. I would conclude and respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Do we have any questions? Gary?
Not later.
Later, later, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and give us a little bit of presentation here on this? I say little. It hasn't been a little, it's been a lot, but go ahead and explain a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'd just like to build on what Richard said. I mean, this is an exciting project that we see for Prescott Valley. Our company is 100% behind this. We see it as a great opportunity to continue the development of downtown Prescott Valley and Prescott Valley in general. There's been, we've been working on this project for about 20 months, and there's been continued interest from multiple developers on this project, doing multiple different analyses, and we see it as a great viable option to continue to build the downtown and to continue that energy that we've started and we need to continue to build upon. So we're really excited for it, and I know I spoke with you guys at the joint session, so I'm here to follow up with any other questions, but we are very excited that you're hearing it here tonight and hopeful to move forward.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When do you plan on starting this project if it's approved?
Excuse me?
When do you guys start the project if it's approved?
If it's approved here tonight and goes on to council and is approved there, we're targeting the first quarter of '16.
I'm sorry, the first quarter of?
First quarter of next year.
'16? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. No more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would like to entertain, any questions from the audience? Yes, sir? Yes, come up here, please, and state your name.
My name is Glenn Gustafson. I live on Lost Flores Avenue. My only questions about this project are walkability, which they claim, and also, is there a percentage of low income planned for the project?
You, Mr. Parker?
At this point in time, specific site plans have not been defined. However, the original concept, at least the review that I've conducted, I've expressed the value of having people be able to walk through the project as opposed to a very secure gated facility. There may be some dialogue about that, but in terms of walkability, one of the reasons why this nine acres has been targeted is its proximity, near proximity to existing businesses that may benefit from having several hundred apartments. Second question about is there an affordability concept? These are intended at market-rate apartments. They are not intended to be subsidized through Chapter 8 or any of those federal programs.
Any questions, commissioners? Good evening. State your name, please.
My name is Ro Campbell. My husband Doug and I have lived in Prescott Valley for 10 years. We chose this community, Prescott Valley, for its unique small-town flavor, for the warmth of the community and the people living in it. My husband and I and our neighbors and friends have some issues that we hope all of you would consider when you plan these apartment units. The meeting on July 3rd of the business owners that you invited all said that it was, in essence, a very good plan, but however, there is only three representations that I know of, of the businesses in the area. A plan is being designed to reduce congestion at Glassford Hill-
Ma'am, would you mind using the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
But closer, yeah.
Sorry, thank you. A plan is being designated to reduce congestion at Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive, which is now the most congested during commuter hours, and I feel, and our friends and neighbors feel, that it's still being more people, there'll be more congestion, no matter how wide that you make or how many lanes extra that you make. Height requirement, three stories, we feel that it would be kind of ruining the small-town ambiance of it. It would make it more of a big city than our quaint little town. There will be, as far as I know, 350 parking places planned on the grounds and another 100 or so, but nobody seems sure where they will be offsite. Do you really believe that people will live, work, shop without using a car? I find that's a little naive. No one seems to address the impact of medical care. The positive is that we have a growth of healthcare specialties in service. The negative specialties are the doctors who have been brought in for their specialty are overwhelmed. There is a six-month waiting list unless you're acute or you have a physician that calls and says the patient must be seen. Finding a primary doctor is almost next to impossible. If you have doctors that are taking new patients, you will have to go on a waiting list. Finally and last, water. I know it seems ridiculous, or that we keep saying it's gonna be okay, just wait, we'll figure it out, but time is really drawing near, and within our means, we are exhausting our water. Information was brought to me by the CWAG Citizens Water Advocacy Group. We just want to make sure that we know progress is good, but please don't do it at the expense of our small community and our neighbors. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
First of all, thank you, ma'am, for your input. I appreciate it. I agree with most of what you're saying. Richard, I have some questions for you, if you don't mind. The tax structure, well, how will that change between now and beginning of construction?
At present, there is no tax, but rather, as part of an entitlement process, staff will bring forward a recommendation, which we've done in every other apartment complex, recommending through you to the council that there be a 2% surcharge on apartments, and we can point to others which established precedent. That would come at, as part of the occupancy of those units and would be assessed when people start renting them out.
Okay, and also the property tax, in other words, the commercial, in other words, is the property tax gonna stay the same or will it change when construction begins?
Property taxes are assessed based on the improvement to a piece of property. There probably is a modicum greater cost for vacant commercial property versus vacant residential property. I'm not a tax assessor. However, the improvements to that property will be assessed based on their valuation. So a built environment is assessed at a higher value, more sales, excuse me, property tax. Just as a reminder, Commissioner Roberts, the town receives no property tax. We have no property tax in the town of Prescott Valley.
Okay, that's new to me. Okay, I wanna ask you a question. Have we ever looked at, I know that I talked to you this afternoon about this, that the police department is supported by sales tax only other than grants. Have we ever looked at the financial costs of our police department in the future for developments of this nature?
There has been, actually, as part of the materials that were submitted to the Town Council in support of additional officers. They looked at high-frequency locations where they have gotten lots of calls, and actually, one of the higher frequencies is Walmart because of the volume of people going through that facility. So yes, growth and development does have pressure on all of the services that the town provides. However, the Town Council has established a ratio between the number of residents in the town of Prescott Valley and a targeted number for the number of sworn officers, and they have elected this year, based on the population that I'm very comfortable with that I keep reporting to others at 45.5. That's very much different than the official numbers from the DES population estimates, which is 38 and some change. We're actually running off the numbers that we're more comfortable with, and that would be the basis, or has been the basis, that the Town Council has allocated staff to include police officers. They're adding five officers this year. Likewise, because of different resource needs and other departments, the town has added staff, and actually, in the Community Development Department, we have added a building safety person because of the volumes that we're seeing, because we're coming out of the recession.
Thank you, Richard. Richard, I'm sorry. Our next steps on this now, please.
Should you elect to recommend to the Town Council approval of this plan amendment, it'll have to be reviewed by the Town Council. After review by the Town Council, then I will solicit from the applicant a formal application for zoning entitlement. That'll be accompanied by a preliminary development plan. That preliminary development plan will also be accompanied by different technical submittals relative to drainage, relative to traffic, access points, and those kind of things. I do, if you would permit me, want to respond about water. The water for commercial and multiple-family developments is not subject of an assured water supply like you have with single-family residential development. The water for those type of developments comes out of the margin between that that's allocated by the third management plan, which is through ADWR, and that that's actually used by residents, in this case of the town of Prescott Valley. And that margin water between the 150 gallons per person per day allocated for each person residing in a single-family residence, difference the 80 gallons per person per day, that's the actual use, is that margin water that affords the creation of commercial and multiple-family and industrial developments. So it is not addressed by an assured water supply statement. Further to that comment, the town of Prescott Valley has been building an affluent resource recharge project for many years, over 20, and on that basis has amassed a very large volume of affluent credits that are now available through Water Assets Management, that is a publicly traded company on Wall Street, that can be made available for those projects moving forward in this era of- projects moving forward in this era of post-declaration water. So this community has enough water to grow well in excess of a hundred and twenty-five-thousand persons based on existing resources that are in hand presently. Any other questions you have of me?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any more comments from the public? Okay, then we'll close this and move the vote. And I guess we need to make a vote on this. I recommend to send to council. You have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we give approval to pass it on to the town council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Dusky?
Yes, with great reservation. For the record, please.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Chairperson Nader?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item. That would be, you might just stay up there, Richard. GPA fifteen dash zero zero three, upon the initiation of the town of Prescott Valley, a public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter Six, circulation element of General Plan 2025, relative to intersection configurations in the downtown area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, you have materials in your packet and various illustrations. I'm going to go into some detail. I think first and foremost, some history. You did discuss this matter at your last joint session with the town council. Taking us maybe a step backwards, the town of Prescott Valley, through its evolution as it's grown up, has gone from a community of dirt streets and no public infrastructure to a serious focus on what kind of intersections occur, where, what kind of roads we have, the type of sections that are associated with those roadways, and et cetera. As part of that, first beginning in General Plan 2020 and really refined in General Plan 2025, the property owners in the town center, as well as other developers throughout the community, wanted to be very certain about, we throw the words out, collector roadways, we throw them out residential roadways, and what do they look like? What are those profiles that the developers caused to construct? And we went to a considerable effort with the landowner in downtown, where you have most of the large arterial roadways, to define what they're going to look like, how they're going to include and encompass all various modes of transportation, including walking, biking, as people travel throughout the community. The circulation element of the town of Prescott Valley is, town of Prescott Valley, General Plan 2025 is multifaceted. It doesn't just talk about roads, but it does talk about trails and how you intersect. It also talks about carrying traffic efficiently through various locations by means of roads that are wide enough, by means of intersections that are spaced properly, and so forth. It also regards intersection improvements. In this case, we use the word roundabout, but where are those roundabouts, which has an effect of improving through traffic? It improves potentially the traffic-carrying capacity of intersection because you don't come to a full stop by between eleven and thirty percent, if you look at the ITE manuals. However, there are some negatives associated with doing roundabouts, and namely, the potential conflict between people who are riding bicycles, walking, and so forth, trying to negotiate that intersection. There's not a hard stop, so there's not an opportunity for somebody to wait for the "walk" sign to say "walk." They have to figure out how they can get across the right-of-way. So on that basis, that the town, while we have not developed roundabouts to date, have looked at this with a fresh face and said, what other opportunities do we have in downtown that may make some intersections more walkable, where we can focus pedestrian traffic to those, and then look at others where we've currently designed a roundabout and potentially carry forward with that recommendation? The town's general plan is very specific, and it says, at these various locations in downtown, all of them will be roundabouts. So what's proposed by the town's professional staff is to take a fresh look at those intersections and be a little more open-minded to either a roundabout or a stop condition or a through condition or whatever, to more efficiently get people from point A to point B without necessarily having to live or abide by a specific recommendation of the plan. To further illustrate, the town, when we undertook our general plan, that information was refined by a registered professional traffic engineer, a woman named Tovey White, then working for a company called Kennely Horn in Phoenix. That firm does, amongst other things, traffic engineering, and she came forward and actually modeled the circumstance of how traffic would move through the downtown based on certain width roads, based on certain configured intersections, so as to make it efficient. She was asked, because we don't want to do this blindfolded, to retrace her steps and come up with an opinion letter to determine whether or not we could go back and look at both. That opinion letter is included in your packet and was discussed at your joint session. And basically, it is that either intersection may be suitable, subject to subsequent study. And I say subsequent study because that will have to precede any decision by the town council as to the ultimate configuration of those intersections. Why? Because if you don't, you're going to get sued. So with that background explanation, it's proposed that the town's general plan circulation element be amended so as to not be specific on roundabouts throughout the downtown, but rather offer, proffer either-or solution at all of the intersections that are currently identified to be either signalized or free-flowing by means of a roundabout. The concern, again, is that if you identify it in the plan and you go a different direction, you have to have support in order to do so. I hope I've given enough of an explanation for you to at least get started on questions, if you have. I would try to respond to those, Mr. Chairman, in your direction.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners?
Yes.
Arla?
I know you've considered community attitude toward roundabouts, but if this is adopted, do you think Prescott Valley is willing to commit the resources to convincing public opinion to accept them?
Couple of things. From my experience, albeit limited in traffic planning, anytime you change something, there's controversy. No matter if you change a stop condition or whatever, people will oppose it. So anything new, and I've seen roundabouts, I'm kind of fond of them, they're actually rotaries that we use, they're not roundabouts in America, but I've grown accepting of them because when I pull a trailer through them, they have a mountable area so I can go up on the curb. Answer your question? Yes, I believe so. The town of Prescott Valley will commit those resources, and those resources are going to come in the form of something other than myself, in the form of a traffic engineer that can explain why this is a better solution. Will they be resisted? Yeah, any condition, whether stop condition or whatever, often is resisted. I can recount the condition that many of us lived through on Windsong as it intersects Lake Shore. That was, at one point, a two-way intersection, and then the traffic got busy, 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 and it went to a four-way intersection. And there were a lot of angry people, "Why are you stopping me?" Well, why? Because we were having problems getting people safely through that intersection. So the public's voice was that we wanted to have a signal to control that intersection. And it's not like you just go out and put up a signal. Unless certain warrants are met and certain conditions are demonstrated, if you put up a signal and somebody rear-end somebody because they didn't see it there, you're going to get sued. So on that basis, yes, it was heavily contemplated and supported by the math and science, and that's something that is visited to the town council for their consideration. So yeah, it's taken seriously, and would there have to be quite a bit of public education, you bet.
Okay, here you're preaching to the choir. I like rotaries. I've used them for a number of years.
And I like your unique way of approving that agenda item.
Well, again, it affords some flexibility so that we don't have a roundabout here, it says, either-or based on the science to see. And Tovey White, who is the engineer, was very explicit after the last meeting. I made a comment that a stop situation was safer for pedestrians. I spoke inappropriately. She says that the science is still out there discovering accidents, and there are different accidents, but they're not the same. And I can't say as a planning professional, certainly not as a traffic engineer, that a stop condition is safer for pedestrian traffic. She says that she would have to do that analysis in order to be able to be absolutely certain what those improvements would be best at each intersection. The concern the staff has is that because the plan says there's going to be a rotary or a roundabout there, that's what the town has to build. We want to seek that flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any questions from the commission? Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing none. I'll open the floor for any comments from the audience. Yes, sir, come on up. You'll have to state your name again.
Once again, my name is Glenn Gustafson. And I reside on Los Flores Avenue. I see, difficult to see, but I've seen what was described in the newspaper, that there would be four roundabouts located basically around the City Hall and library area. Let me preface anything and everything that I say, that I am not in favor of any such roundabouts. If you've traveled to Sedona, if you go from here through Cottonwood, you go through seven roundabouts. If you come from I-17 into Sedona, you go through seven different roundabouts. They do not, do not facilitate traffic flow. You must slow down and be aware of any possible timid driver. Certainly, they're not facilitating to They are not facilitating to bicycle traffic, and they are absolutely not facilitating to walkable conditions. Prescott Valley has a terrible shortage of sidewalks, except for around the City Hall complex and library. You can make a whole circle there. The ladies do it every day when they go out on their walk for their break or whatever. This is not going to affect their walk. But if you go and look at the senior community that's just over here, there's no sidewalk. They can't walk anyplace. So here, we're erecting roundabouts before we've solved the problem of pedestrian traffic. And once again, I'm going to say, roundabouts do not facilitate traffic movement. They slow traffic down. Those four intersections that are there, I would say are relatively minor intersections, and if the resources are going to be spent someplace, I think we could spend resources on traffic lights or improved lane conditions or whatever you might want to come up with, but certainly not for roundabouts right here around the city area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Gustafson, for the record, our action here tonight is not to determine whether we're going to build roundabouts or not. The general plan stipulates that they will be roundabouts, and the action here tonight is to give the option as to whether they will be or another option is available. That's our only action here tonight. We don't have anything to do with whether we're going to build one or not.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
If the general plan says roundabouts, change it.
Yes, sir, that's what we're talking about before you scream at me again. Read it.
Okay, any other questions? I'll open the floor again to the audience.
My name is Lebeth Pondish, and I live in Unit Nineteen on Calle Santa Cruz. I was very pleased to see in the paper that you were planning to make some changes around civic circle because it's been a problem for me, and in fact, I was going to contact Public Works, even looked up the phone number about a month before this actually appeared in the paper. When I see that you're looking at the possibility of conducting a traffic study, I think that you're possibly neglecting one very important part, and that is the people who wish to go from the northern side, on the west of the library, across and onto Lake Shore Drive, because there are a huge number of us who live on that north side of that who don't even go to that corner because it's too dangerous. Especially since the opening of Walmart, the amount of traffic on Lake Shore Drive has increased exceedingly, and in exceeding the traffic amount, they are also exceeding the speed limit. It's turned into a speedway going back and forth, which makes it difficult, but it makes it impossible to go from the west side of the library across Lake Shore because you cannot see the oncoming traffic from the east. The landscaping around the library prohibits you from seeing any traffic coming until it gets to that intersection, and it doesn't get there slowly. So I was going to contact Public Works about the fact that we needed some sort of traffic interaction there, and I don't care what you put in there, but so long as there's a way that we can get across, it would make it a lot easier for those of us who live north of the library and City Hall to be able to get to the other part of Prescott Valley. I traveled in both Australia and New Zealand and found that roundabouts there were a very workable thing, except that when you come from the United States, you have to remember to look the other direction for oncoming traffic, and it does work. But like the other gentleman said, I've gone to Sedona and thought, I'm never going back here again because of the constant roundabouts. Chino Valley is beginning to become that kind, but they are at least making those larger and much more navigable. So again, please consider the fact that a traffic study is not going to show everybody who might wish to go through that intersection, because we're avoiding it until you get it fixed. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Any questions? Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am, I would suggest you take that to the council when they hear this.
Okay, with that, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the proposed amendment GPA fifteen dash zero zero three to the master circulation plan for Section fourteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Chairperson Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to our next agenda item. And that will be a public hearing item, ZOA 15-001 upon the initiation of Town of Prescott Valley, considering of an ordinance amending Articles 13-02, Definitions 13-06, Use Regulations 13-17, Use Regulations 13-21, Accessory Building Structures and Uses, and 13-24 Off-Street Parking Requirements Minimum in Chapter 13 Zoning to clarify and update the use regulations relating to short-term lodging. My goodness. Carmen, good evening.
I was a mouthful.
Good evening, Carmen.
Good evening, Chairman Yater, and good evening, Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening, staff has zoning ordinance amendments, which you just listed off, relating to short-term rentals. Staff presented this to the joint session Planning Commission and Town Council meeting in July, and has been working with the legal department to come up with some amendments to the code in order to provide some protection in the neighborhoods for this use. Short-term lodging of residential properties has certainly become quite a popular way to travel. And while our existing code has some provisions, it's outdated, ambiguous, and needed some updating in order to make sure that those protections were in place. So just kind of a general overview of the major items that we addressed were to ensure that a use permit was applied for with this use. Business license is required. The off-street parking and the terms of the use permit are updated. We've also put a provision in there that the host would meet the guests on arrival and supply 24-hour contact. And those were some of the major things that we looked at. With saying that, I would be available for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Rankin?
I just have one question. Is there, have you, when we're looking at this, are, is there anything that has a limitation as to how many of these permits would be issued in a particular area?
We did not put any limitations with respect to that. With the use permit, the Board of Adjustments will be looking at each application and be basing their decision on the appropriateness and the ability of the applicant to provide adequate parking, to provide facilities, and again, agents or themselves to be there. So based on the applicant and the strength of the applicant's proposal, that would be how the item is addressed. Just for your reference, at this stage, we have no, we have a few vacation rentals that we're aware of, but it hasn't been a use that's been overwhelmingly popular yet in Prescott Valley. We do expect the use to become more and more popular, and that's the reason for the performance standards. But we do feel that the performance standards will address any issues that may arise.
Do neighborhoods or adjacent properties have any ability to protest to the board when an application is made?
Yes, sir. With a use permit, there will be a notification at the property, and therefore, anybody who wants to speak can go to the Board of Adjustments and voice their concerns.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts, go ahead.
I'm just, how do you police that? I mean, are you going to notify homeowners? I mean, how are you going to let individual people know this? Or do they have?
The ones that are currently operating, or?
Those who plan on operating, you know. Sometimes we want to get in the financial crunch and say, we're going to use our house for lodging, you know?
Right. It would be like any use that comes in. Like right now, we have inquiries regarding the use. And so when an inquiry for the use comes in, because it is one that is widely, I think, kind of known that if you're going to use your property, you need to contact Town Hall. There are people that go ahead and start this use without doing so, and our code enforcement officers will be monitoring the use and contacting people who aren't aware of that and asking them to come into compliance.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Parker wants to say something.
There's a website that you can go to where people advertise, and our code enforcement people will be looking at that, I'm sure, weekly. Click, 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 you know, Vacation Rentals in Prescott Valley, ping, and then we'll send them a nice little note.
Job security.
Mr. Chairman.
Good one.
Yes. I have some experience with vacation rentals on County's Planning and Zoning Commission, and I just want to commend staff because I definitely think it's a very good idea to have the Board of Adjustments hear use permit applications as opposed to planning and zoning. It definitely is going to save a lot of time on our part, trust me. And I definitely would love to give someone a big hug over that. So thank you.
There's Richard.
You're red. You made her red. Commissioner Dusky?
Yeah, Carmen, what happens with the issuance of one of these permits if the applicant would then be in violation of an HOA provision that prohibits that activity?
Commissioner Dusky, with the HOAs, that's something that is handled individually with each individual HOAs. From what I understand from our town attorney, the HOAs trump whatever we do here, so if they don't allow it, that would be something that they would address there.
Does that mean that the permit would not be issued? Or would it be issued and then it would become an HOA argument with the applicant?
Yeah, it wouldn't be something the town would get involved in.
That wasn't my question.
The town doesn't administer the individual HOAs, so if a application were approved over the objection of the HOA, it would become an issue for the HOA to address through legal action. The town is not party to any contractual agreement with individual homeowners' associations. I can tell you from a staff professional, staff level, if it's determined as part of our early evaluation that a homeowners' association is going to oppose something, we're going to be very careful about proceeding and frankly, recommend to somebody that they not waste their time, energy, and resources, or hours, to move forward to a Board of Adjustments. Because I don't think that the Board of Adjustments would approve something like that with that kind of opposition. If however, in a case where there is a homeowner's association in place, we do the necessary publications, nobody comes out, they're silent, we would not consider any input because no input from the association was made or provided. But we are not in a position to administer that homeowners' association. I get you close?
No, I understand. I just wonder why the town couldn't get a provision from the HOAs whether they allow this or not. All you need is a copy of the HOA requirements, and if you had that and somebody applied from that HOA, you'd already have your answer.
Yeah, my concern is, the work I keep up with now to be uniform with zoning code would be multiplied by every HOA that I would have to become very familiar with. So from that standpoint, I would choose not to. I'd rather have those people come to me to provide that information as opposed to me being an expert on provisions of individual homeowners' association regulations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Having represented many HOAs, the presentation was spot-on, and I would think that the town would not want to take on the liability of representing HOAs. That would be a terrible thing for the town to do.
Any other questions from commissioners? Nothing else? I guess I would accept any motion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Anybody in the audience want to come up and discuss anything with us? Seeing, hearing none? I'll entertain a motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we forward a recommendation of approval of ZOA 15-001.
I'll second that.
Okay, with that, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Chairperson Yater?
Yes.
Chairperson Rutherford?
Yes.
Or Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
That's why you guys are all down on that end, see. Okay, we go on to our next action item. RP 15-003, upon the initiation of the Town of Prescott Valley, consideration of a revisionary plat of a portion of the Viewpoint Drive formerly El Camino Real, for the purpose of realigning the intersection at Long Look Drive. Mr. Joe Scott, good to see you.
Well, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. You have summarized the purpose of this revisionary plat, which is illustrated here. And this is really just a housekeeping project to clean up and better define the viewpoint right-of-way, where it was already built in-town property, and this just better defines it. So with that, we recommend approval of RP 15-003.
Any questions from any of the commissioners?
It's already been done.
Call to the audience. I'm catching all, I'm catching everything up here, okay? I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RP 15-003.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Chairperson Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which would be RP 15-004. Upon the application of Charles McGee, consideration of a revisionary plat to combine lots 100 and 101, Prescott Country Club, Unit 6, located at 1427 North Rustler's Roost, Dewey, Arizona. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you. This is two residential lots, and the one lot is currently developed with a residential, one single-family residence, and the other lot is vacant. They wish to combine in order to place a accessory structure on the lot, and in conformance with Chapter 13, the zoning code. And the configured lot 100A will meet the zoning standards of the R-1L-12 PAD district. With that, staff recommends approval of RP 15-004.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions from the commissioners at all? Okay, Matt?
Rustler's Roost, correct me, Mr. Scott, is off of Prescott Country Club, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none? Any questions from the audience? Having none, actually. I guess we'll take, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. Approval of RP 15-004 to be approved and to be passed on to council. I have a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, guys. With that, roll call vote, please.
Chairperson Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll go to our next agenda item, FDP 15-009. Upon the application of Viewpoint North LLC, consideration of replat of Viewpoint North, Unit 15, lots 1377, 1378, 1381 through 1386, 1398, and 1399, to add a 20-foot maintenance easement to lots 1377, 1378, 1388 through 1386, 1399, or 1398, I'm sorry, and 1399. And to vacate a 15-foot Type II drainage easement on lots 1398 and 1399.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman, for reading. Well done, and Commissioners. And yes, this, the original Viewpoint North 15 plat indicated and approved a 54-foot Type II drainage easement along the rear of the subject lots. And the Type II drainage easement is defined as being the responsibility of the, for cosmetic aesthetic maintenance of the easement, is a responsibility of the property owner in which the easement lies. The Town of Prescott Valley assumes the responsibility for repair and replacement of major elements of the constructed drainage facilities. Drainage channel that lies in the easement is entirely on the rear portion of the subject lots. The center of the channel, drainage channel, is 20 feet into the rear of the subject lots, includes the slope of both sides of the channel. Recently, when residential construction began on the subject lots, it was determined that the rear portion of the lots needed to be filled in order to provide full-level lots and be able to place a wall on the rear of those lots. Filling the lots to build a wall requires a fill also be added at three-to-one slope for about 20 feet into the downslope of the channel, which is the drainage easement on the rear of the subject lots. They added fill to allow the walls and the channels and bank stabilization features are then for the benefit of the adjacent lots 1387 through 1399. As such, a maintenance easement of 20 feet is being added to a portion of the Type II drainage easement where the bank has been filled. And also, the town does not want to assume the responsibility of maintenance of newly constructed channel banks. The purpose stated on the plat is a 20-foot maintenance easement dedicated by this plat for the purpose maintaining the southernly drainage channel. The owners of lots 1387 through 1389 responsible for maintaining the structural integrity of said bank. And along that, there's going to be a, again, the plat, a abandonment of some small sections of the Type II drainage easement on the lots 1398 and 1399. So staff feels this corrects a problem and takes the town off the hook for maintenance of that, and recommends approval of FDP 15-009.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Commission?
Any questions?
Ain't nobody has any. Call to the audience. Again, questions?
Would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve FDP 15-009.
I'll second. I have a sec, a motion and a second. I have a first and a second, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
Chairperson Yater?
Yes.
The next agenda item is called to the public. Sherry, would you handle that, please?
Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not require permission in advance, or request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of a public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date.
Mr. Parker has a comment to make.
I just want to take a moment. I wasn't aware that Toby White, the traffic engineer that prepared the opinion that you looked at today, is in the audience. And I'm sure she was just here to make sure that I didn't misrepresent any of her materials that she provided to you, as I did at the joint session. But I wanted to take a moment to reintroduce Toby White to the Planning Commission because she's going to be... she's going to be probably doing most of the work for Dave and Associates, as we sort out what kind of intersections occur in downtown. So, with that, Mrs. White, would you come up and introduce yourself?
I think she just came here to make sure that I was going to behave myself or something here, I don't know. We need a lot of help up here.
Richard just likes to embarrass me. Yes, my name is Toby White, and I am working part-time with Dave and Associates, and did prepare that traffic study, and had worked on the original study. It wasn't an update to the old study, but I knew it. I remembered enough to be able to, I believe, give a good, updated opinion. So hopefully, we can work some more together.
Now we know.
After a rainstorm, since I had to go.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming to our, our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the Planning and Zoning meeting for, what is today, August 10th, 2015.